Congratulations to Julianne Manlove for being one of 20 winners of the Wright Rhode Island Short Fiction Competition. Our town takes great pleasure in sharing this accomplishment in your life. It was noted that your story hero was one of 16 stories to receive a notable mention. By this achievement, you have set a commendable example for your community. And you have proven through diligence, hard work and desire, the goals you have set for yourself can be reached. And then we are also giving one to the teacher also, and her name is Rebecca Burns. And it reads, "The Hockington Town Council hereby extends its sincere congratulations to Rebecca Burns for being recognized as being instrumental in connecting her students with local writers and providing for creative opportunities." Teachers have the most important profession in the world, taking our children on, on one of life's most exciting journeys, learning. They are the foundation of our children's future and play a critical role in their lives, molding young people to become responsible citizens. Teaching requires a special talent, understanding and kindness, devoting their life to our children's education. The town of Hockington hereby recognizes your dedication and expresses our appreciation. The approval of the consent agenda. Approved Town Council meeting minutes of April 18th, 2022. Set May 16th, 2022 as a hearing date for a special permit for Huckfin Day filed by the Ashley Sportsman. Approved refund resulting in a tax assessment, a tax assessor abatement submitted by the tax collector. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Maf and I, motion passes. Up next vacancies and appointments, discuss, consider and possibly vote to appoint Katrina Caputo as zoning board of review slash appealed board clerk. Is there any discussion? We've received a letter in our packets from Lisa.
That was good.
She on with us?
She is not on with us, no. 16, 2021, the hearing was continued to March 15th, 2021. On March 15th, 2021, the hearing was held and was continued to June 7th, 2021, where upon the hearing date was closed with a decision date set for June 21, 2021. On June 21, 2021, the proposed amendments were divided out in the hearing date for the proposed amendment to allow electric charging stations in commercial manufacturing and neighborhood business zones, including the two current gas stations, was continued to September 7th, 2021. On September 7th, I'm sorry, 2021. On September 7th, 2021, the hearing date was continued to May 2nd, 2022. So with that, we'll open up a council discussion. I would like to start that discussion off by, I would like to have a motion made to set a date to make a decision. And reason being is because I would like this to go away because it has been continued for so long. There's no state law dictating any of those other stuff. So I think we're kind of jumping out in front of something right now. So, you know, for the sake of not kicking it down the road anymore. And until there's, you know, more information out there, I don't think we should be the, you know, the ones who kind of come up with that. So, but obviously if you have all the other opinions, dilution.
So what are you?
I'm saying we, we, we set a date to vote on it, right? Because I think we have to set a date to vote on all this stuff. If we were to continue to a date to vote on it or make a decision.
Been continued a number of times, so you would have to.
Because it says motion to continue.
Right, you'd have to either set, continue the public hearing to a later date in time. That's, that's what.
That's what they actually have, right, right.
So at that point, you could have the public hearing and then you could make a decision to, to approve it or deny it.
Right, so that's, so.
That's where you are.
To make a long story short, what I was saying was I, I don't want to move forward with this. So I would be game to vote this down. Not, not down because I'm against whatever it is, electric charging stations. It's the fact that I don't, I don't think this is necessary in the town right now. We have two gas stations. I don't see anybody going and building a standalone charging area.
I'm just listening.
All right, well, funny look, would you agree? Would you, I mean, it's more of a.
No, it's, it's, I mean, you're, you're on track with it. You know, if you really want to charge a car, you can go right up to the parking lot, just about, you know, right over to, over on the other side of the border. So, I mean, that kind of is there. I mean, it's not a limitation of that if you really want to just plug your car and regenerate your house. But, uh, you know, some obviously will come farther down the road, whether it be with the rest of us with this council or the next council. So, yeah, I agree with you.
So, so are we voting to continue or are we voting?
I would like to.
Just get rid of it.
Mr. President, if I could, I would suggest that today, the council could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then also to pick a date, set the vote on the order.
Okay.
That's fine. Yes, all right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we close the hearing on this and set a date to vote on it.
A second.
Yeah.
There you go.
All in favor? Did anyone second?
I seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry. Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Maf and I, motion passes. The hearing is closed and we will set a date for a decision.
Yeah.
Yep.
It should be the 16th.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, up next, under new business discussion in response to potential options for disposition of Hockington's portion of the Potter Hill Mill property. Welcome, Mr. Dorsey, how are you?
Doing well, good evening.
If you just say your name for the record, that'd be great.
John Dorsey, Special Master for the Potter Hill Mill. Good evening, members of the council, and thank you for having me back.
Thank you for being here.
So the last I had appeared before the council, I had explained there were two issues that the mastership was wrestling with. And the first was coming up with a path to deal with the demolition of the mill buildings situated on the Westerly side of the property. And in parallel with that, looking at options to try and address the dam infrastructure at the site. And at the time that I appeared before council last, Westerly's council was also considering how it wanted to take an approach to the dam. And as I'm sure the council here is aware, for the time being, Westerly has paused those efforts. In light of that, the question that I posed to Westerly is, in terms of advancing a demolition of the mill buildings and coming up with a disposition for the property ultimately, did Westerly have an interest in taking site control of the portion of the property situated on the Westerly side of the river? We had a couple of council sessions. It was obviously a tough decision for the council to consider. There's pros and cons to site ownership. Last month, when I appeared before Westerly's council, they did vote in favor of seeking permission from the Superior Court to take site control. There is a process in the Superior Court. Westerly's resolution is subject to consideration by the Superior Court overseeing the proceedings. So procedurally, my next step will be to petition the court for instructions, making a recommendation as to the future site control of the property and trying to advance the demolition of the mill buildings and looking at other options for the dam. In light of that, I left off with, with the council here that I would come back to when I had something substantive to report, both to keep you informed and also to get your input into this process. And so this is obviously a substantive step with Westerly's decision to seek court approval to take site control of the Westerly side. So in seeking instructions from the court, what I wanted to discuss with council here is in terms of the Potter Hill Mill or in terms of the Hockington side of the Potter Hill Mill, what are, does the council here have thoughts or considerations that it wants the mastership to take into account in seeking instructions from the Superior Court? It's a creative process, so there's a number of ways that there could be a disposition of the Hockington side of the property. There's no building infrastructure on that side of the property, but obviously the fish ladders on that side of the property. And then there is the embankment of the river on the other side of the property, so it, it's important as well. And so some of the options are, this council could consider making a similar request to the Superior Court to take site control of the Hockington side of the property. We could seek protocols from the court to consensually have Westerly take site control of the Hockington side of the property. I would need to go back to Westerly to basically expand what they've already voted on so far. Again, all subject to court approval. Or the mastership could request as part of where I am with Westerly right now, that the court authorize me to grant Westerly an easement in perpetuity that would allow access to the Hockington parcel for its dam assessment work to address any safety issues in the future and any work on the dam that's ultimately approved by Westerly. So that last option is probably from a procedural standpoint, the path of least resistance. But again, it's a creative process. Those are just three options. There's other options we certainly could look at. And I didn't want to be presumptuous in filing anything with the Superior Court before I came to this council and had a more in-depth discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if Hockington were to take site control of the Hockington side of the property, that seems logical because it's on our books. That property is on our books, not on Westerly's books, am I correct?
It's on your books, that's correct.
So I think if we should take site control of that. My other, but my other question is, if Westerly takes site control of the dam, then we have no, we are at their mercy, I guess, is the bottom line?
So, let me answer that the best I can. It's, there, I think there's a cost benefit analysis that this council would have to undertake if you were considering the potential of asking the court to grant site control for the Hockington.
I wasn't. I just wanted to make sure that if they have it, we have no.
Recourse of coming back. In other words, they, excuse me, counselor, I think.
You're right.
What we're trying to say is, it's like, okay, it's all yours. All of a sudden they come back and say, well, you know, we changed our mind, we're going to take it down. Then we're back to, you know, wells, all that, we're back on that side of the fence again.
So again, there's, my comment wouldn't change, though. I think there's an inherent cost benefit analysis that you have to do. Because the other, there, again, there's a couple of options as I've outlined. One is this council could say, we would like you to, to ask the Superior Court to let us take site control. The pro of that is now you have site control of part of the property, half, half of which is, it's about half the dam. And so for the work to proceed, obviously your, your input and approval would be necessary. The downside of that is it would also be the town directly taking on ownership and liability for the dam infrastructure itself, which is, you know, significant. So that's, I think that's a cost benefit analysis. The other thing I would say is that the way Westerly structured its resolution asking for court approval is that the mastership proceedings would stay open for a period of time. So Hockington is obviously an interested party to those proceedings. So if there was a recommendation as to the dam work proceeding, then this council would be on notice of that and would obviously have the opportunity to comment. And if for some reason what Westerly was recommending and what Hockington is comfortable with were at odds, hopefully they wouldn't be. But if they were at odds, you would have an opportunity to be heard on that.
Is there an option? What do you mean by the properties on our books? I don't.
The little, the little teeny bit.
I know, I understand that, but I just wanted to hear that from Mr. Dorsey, what you mean by that.
If, if I understood the question or comment correctly, so there's two parcels of property.
I mean, I understand that, there's two parcels. So what do you, on our books would mean that we are responsible for, that we own it? That's, that's how I would interpret that.
And we could, we could.
It's a receivership, so i- is it, is it, it's, it's two parcels, right?
Two parcels, one in Westerly, one in Hockington.
We're pretty much getting the option to say that we would want to take site control of that section, right?
The Hockington parcel, correct.
So is there a financial responsibility?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a short answer.
Right, and that would be because I, I don't want the town of Hockington to buy it.
It's a substantial financial obligation because right now, there's no question that that dam infrastructure has not been assessed in decades.
Exactly.
It absolutely needs me, at a bare minimum, maintenance.
Right.
And that's what Westerly is struggling with. It's.
Right, I, I don't want anything to do with it.
But if Westerly said they were going to take site control of the dam, right? Also, am I right?
I just don't, Westerly has said, the, the resolution from Westerly has granted permission to go to the court and ask for authorization and permission to convey just the Westerly parcel. So it, it might be helpful.
Not the dam?
In part, so the, the property line bisects the dam infrastructure itself. And it might be helpful, I should have remitted these with a package, but I have a couple of site plans that I'll hand to the council just to help you visualize it.
I was also surprised that, well, I may, maybe not surprised that Representative Kenny. You know, when the governor, a governor was there last Monday.
Yes, that was going to be my question to you, counselor, was you, were you invited to the tour? Because Representative Kenny.
I drove by in my truck just at the right time. I was like, oh, wow, what's going on here?
Representative Kenny stated that.
My hair was.
Representative Kenny had stated to the Wesley's son during their, while he was walking around, the governor, that it's a low risk dam. So I'm not 100% sure what he means in that.
So.
Where are we looking on here?
As you bring.
Well, while you're getting oriented with the map, and I'll, I'll describe it in further detail in a second. To answer that question, the, the dam is currently classified by the Department of Environmental Management as a low hazard dam. What that speaks to is not necessarily the condition of the dam, but what it speaks to is that in the event of a failure of the dam, that there's a low risk to loss of life and, and property from flooding. So it doesn't speak to the condition of the dam, which hasn't been assessed in, in any recent timeframe. So as you're looking at the, the map that I handed out, off to the left-hand side of the map, you'll see the bridge that goes over the Pocket Tuck River. If you're facing the northerly direction with the mill buildings on your left, you'll see that the, the center line for the Pocket Tuck River is really the dividing line between the Westerly parcel and the Hockington parcel. So you have the Westerly parcel, which is about six acres in total, and then the Hockington parcel, which is about roughly two and a half acres. And again, that contains the, about half of the dam infrastructure, the fish ladder structure that you've heard referenced along with the, the riverbank and improvements along the riverbank on the right-hand side of the, of the river, that would be. And so while Westerly has agreed to take site control, what that would really allow is the demolition work for the mill buildings to proceed. Obviously, half of the dam infrastructure is on the Westerly side. But part of the reason that this conversation is important is because if this council were to express to me a strong preference that if you said, Mr. Special Master, timeout, we would like to look at site control more seriously, that's fine. But now I would know, we have two municipalities who are seeking site control and how that interacts with getting the, the work done on the dam ultimately. If you say, we want to be an interested party in this process, but we don't want site control, then I need to look at options like asking the court if I can grant an easement to Westerly so that they can do the assessment on the Hockington side of the parcel, ultimately be able to do any recommended work on the Hockington side of the parcel. And, and that would be another path.
I'm going to speak to, I, I don't think the town of Hockington should offer, want to want to own this piece of property. And Wesley and Hockington are obviously two different things, you know? Now it's, now it's the hopping in, and I'm sure it's been this way the whole time, but now it's, well, if Hockington wants it, they're going to assume half the, the dam, right? So, well, just, I was just going to remind you that Hockington's municipal capital improvement budget is $135,000. Westerly has a whole nother level to whatever. It's not even apples and oranges, you know, you know, to kind of compare on the situation. I, I just, Wesley gets this. I, I understand they're going to clean up and they're going to get this four or five acre property, whatever. And it's a much more suitable piece of property to do anything else with than this 0.4 acre of anything that you couldn't do anything with other than launch canoes off, which we all know Laurel Street's terrible. No one in their right mind would ever park their car on the side of that road a bit and do anything.
Or if you're abandoned.
Real right, but I, I, I just think us jumping in on a quarter acre, I don't. Maybe it gives a say on, on what happens with, with the dam, you know what I mean? Because then what are you going to say? Well, no, I don't want to do anything with the dam. No, you want to do something with the dam. No, I'm not going to do anything with the dam. Now, what are we, is the whole, you know, tug of war with Wesley again? I, I just don't.
So one of the things I wanted to point out or just mention, regardless of how we decide to do this, I had a very, very brief discussion with Sarah Windsor from the land trust. And they have expressed an interest in being able to have that piece of land for a boat ramp, maybe create some parking.
The dam comes with it.
But yes, they, they probably don't understand that and the financial obligation. So I think I would like to maybe talk, have, have them be able to talk or, you know.
Yeah, because.
Understand that a little bit more.
I mean, Wes, so, so for instance, I've, I've, I've listened to all of us, because I've, you know, watched them all, you know? In, in the big discussion, what's the liability? You know, what's going to happen? I know Sean Lacy had said that it wasn't going to affect the town's insurance policy. But then again, I mean, Wesley's a little different. They might be paying a lot more money than us. So that might be a different ballgame. The insurance rate may be different for us. That, that, there may be an effect on that. That's something that we don't know. We, we don't know if our insurance company is going to say, yeah, no bad idea.
The other thing to consider that I, I should have mentioned before with the idea that if Westerly has site control, that it, it really is driving what happens with the dam. There's a whole regulatory process involved in anything going on, on the mill site itself, the dam infrastructure. There's a number of regulatory approvals that have to be given. And some of those regulatory approvals require public notice and public input. So apart from the Superior Court process that I'm explaining, I just want to make sure that, that council's aware. There's, there's a number of platforms for this council to still have a place in that discussion. Hopefully, the idea would be, once the condition of the dam can be fully assessed and a plan that, you know, a plan drawn up out of that, I would certainly think, and my experience with Wesley has been, I think they're open to talking to you guys. And obviously, my experience being here, I think you guys are open to that same discussion. Hopefully, everybody would be pushing in the same direction here. But if not, there's definitely a platform for, for this town's interest to be earned.
Because there's also smaller areas too, Ken, where, well, I don't know, is it a better idea that two, two towns are involved? Cause there's also smaller areas too, where, well, I, I don't know, is it a better idea that two, two towns are involved in this? Does it give you better, like grant funding? Does it, does it help that way? I don't know, but.
That wasn't my, that wasn't my point. I just, I watched the meeting too. And when they voted to take site control, see, it's all tied together. If they take site control of the mill, they're also taking site control of the dam. Am I right?
You, you're not.
That's how, that's how.
Does the dam really technically is connected to the?
It's not correct.
Okay.
Engineering terms and, and I'm, I'm as guilty of that as anybody when we're, when we're talking about it in generic terms. We've said the mill and the dam, but if the resolution itself cites to the Westerly parcel. And if we go back to, to the.
Okay, it doesn't say, yeah, it's just.
Correct, correct.
But, but they are, I should have brought.
And so that's why I'm trying to.
The resolution said something about that they, yeah, the Westerly resolution said that they would, um.
Yeah, cause I, I, and, and it never once in those meetings that I hear him talk about Hopkinton only, potentially only half of the dam, you know what I mean? So that, that's why, I mean, this is definitely in the news, you know, to me.
Well, it went, Westerly hasn't brought, yeah, and Westerly has not brought that concept up. I'm, I'm back here because I told this council I would come back when I had something substantive. So it's not an idea that they brought up.
It says, it says the, the last, second to the last paragraph. Providing that the town shall not be obligated to undertake activities with regard to the dam structure situated upon the property, um, Westerly's property until and unless the town develops and approves a plan for any such dam-related activity. So to me, that said, when they're taking site control of the, I want to say mill, Westerly property, they're also taking site control of the dam, but they're not going to do anything with it. And then they're not going to be obligated to do anything with it.
It's with, with all.
Isn't that what you, so I don't even know why we have to discuss it because that's not ours. The dam is not.
Well, I just, I just want to be clear about what the resolution says. The resolution does say with regard to the dam structure situated upon the property, the property is defined as the Westerly parcel.
Correct.
So they are only taking what is in Westerly. It is.
So.
How can two towns take site control of the dam?
I'm sorry?
How can two towns take site control of the dam? You can't.
You could certainly have more than one owner for one dam.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's.
And, and this.
That wasn't the way I.
And council here doesn't have, you don't have to do anything. You could tell me, John, thanks for showing up and giving us an update, but we're not going to take any action. Again, I just ba- based on what I had told this council I would do, I wanted to, to make myself available and make sure that council knows what's going on. I understand it, how important this issue is going to be.
Is there an option that Wesley petitions the court to, to take over that piece of property in Hopkinton?
Yeah, so that was one of the three options that I discussed. Legally, that's a.
Okay, I, or you had said it was a, an easement or whatever, yeah.
So the, the options that, that I had thought of, and again, it's creative, could be more than three, but the three are, Hopkinton could say, Mr. Special Master, we'd like to make a similar request to the Superior Court as Westerly. Or you could have a consensual process where both Hopkinton and Westerly is saying to the Superior Court, we agree that Westerly should take over the Hopkinton parcel. That's a little bit of a complicated legal procedure, but yeah, that's, that's an option. And I would, I would have to go back to Westerly and say, do you want to expand what you've already voted in favor of to do this? Or the last option is you can say, we don't really want to take any action right now. We'd like to just stay where we are. And what I would plan to do, because I, I do think Westerly needs access. If, if Hopkinton's not going to take site ownership, then I think Westerly needs access to the Hopkinton parcel to get something done with the dam. And so the way I would structure that protocol would be to a- ask the court for permission to grant Westerly a perpetual easement over the Hopkinton parcel so they can do the assessment, come up with the plan.
Gotcha.
But again, that doesn't displace the town from being an interested party in terms of what ultimately happens.
Please do.
Okay, Mr. Dorsey, the, um, the current title holder for the Hopkinton, that point four acre parcel, is that renewable resources saying that owns the Westerly side as well as of today?
That's correct.
Okay, and so if Westerly's petition is granted by the Superior Court, then the town of Westerly would become the title owner of the Westerly parcel.
That's also correct.
And so if the town of Hopkinton says, we want nothing to do with this Hopkinton point four acres, who at the end of the receivership process would end up becoming the title owner?
That it could remain in its current ownership with the easement on the property. It doesn't, it doesn't remove the option that as we get further down the road, Westerly may ask me to come back to this council and make a request for whatever reason that they take site control. This council may say, now that we've had a chance to look at this a little more, we would like to take site control. So it doesn't displace any of those options. But I think to make sure that practically something can actually get done on both parcels at a bare minimum, I would need to grant an easement to, to Westerly.
But, but Hopkinton, the town couldn't grant an easement over privately owned land, right?
That, that's correct, but the order of pointing the special master vests the special master with the right title and interest to the property through the proceeding. So the court has taken jurisdiction of the property. The, again, this is, this is all a hundred thousand feet still. The court could say, Mr. Special Master, thanks for looking at this, but this isn't what we're going to do. But the court could also say, Mr. Special Master, you can grant Westerly an easement over the Hopkinton parcel.
Here, here's my, I, I know we're still in discussion here. Here's my thing, if we go ahead and say, okay, Wesley, take it over, okay? Next council, council, council down the road, all of a suddenly comes back and we go back into, it's a danger. And all of a suddenly, we have nothing to say about it and they take it down and we're back to square one with the wells, the road, everything like that. That, that's my fear. If we just say Wesley, okay, here it is. Now, if there was something in the legal world where we could sit there and say, okay, we'll give this to you. But if it comes to this point where we're going to take this down, we need to, you know, stop and have a roundtable or something.
Almost kind of want to have your cake and eat it too. You, you know what I mean?
I just, it's, you know, it's great to, to doing this. I think it's, I think it's a mistake. That's just me. Because it's not something you're just going in and clearing some old brush and debris. There's a lot of work behind this. But that's just my feeling is I just don't want to go ahead and say, okay, yep, then next council comes in and they're climateist or whatever it may be, and here it is, we're back to square one, the dam comes down. Cause I remember when we started this process and the committee started this process, so the dam was in danger, the assessment, blah, blah, blah. Then all of a sudden we come out, it's like you were saying, Counselor, it was a low risk. Mr. Dorsey, you said it was a.
Low hazard risk.
You know, because it got, though all those people that were sat on the committee, all the people that lived on the river, you know, kind of went through this, all went along, and now we're at the point where, as it is, it's not going to come down, right?
Not right now.
Not right now, it's not.
What, Westerly has been vocal in the meetings that I've participated in saying they don't want it to come down. And so that's where I think they are right now, but that, that's where we are right now. That doesn't mean a new council down the road can decide something different.
That's my fear. That's, you know, I'm saying.
So, so, so Mr. Dorsey has came back to, to let Hopkinton know their options, that there is a potential if, if Hopkinton is interested in, in asking for site control of this property.
I don't.
I, I would.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is, is it a possible option that the town of Hopkinton or Hopkinton Land Trust takes ownership of that point four acres of land, but gives Westerly the perpetual easement?
You could also do it in reverse. So I could go forward to the Superior Court at this point and say, look, Westerly has indicated to me that it feels strongly about the disposition of the Westerly side. It also needs an easement to be able to really assess the dam, which they've already been out to the property with par engineering to, to have them take, they haven't done the assessment work, but just to get oriented with the site and come up with a plan to actually do the assessment. So I could ask the court to let me grant that easement. And, and to your counselor's question, it's, that doesn't necessarily foreclose that after this council has a chance to dig into this a little more, sort of see how things are going, consider options and maybe talk to groups like the trust. That doesn't prevent this council from coming back to the special master and saying, we understand there's an easement in favor of Westerly, but could the ultimate disposition of this, could the trust take it over? It doesn't foreclose that.
Is there a.
And that's, that, that's really the middle ground approach, just take into account your concern along with not overstepping things that too quickly.
So is there a price associated with acquiring it financially? Like, are we buying, would we be buying this property? Is that to gain site control, would we ultimately be buying it?
There would have to be, so, yeah, there would have to be some type of consideration. But, you know, for example, on Westerly's side, there, a lot of their consideration is the investments that they're making into the property to deal with the issues. So if that was something that the town or the trust approached me with, that would be part of the discussion.
When I was talking about taking site control on the Hopkinton side, I was thinking of it, that it's a piece of property that we should be able to sell or do something with. And so right now technically it should be in foreclosure, the relative equivalent of foreclosure. And we should be able to, to get the revenue from selling it to someone. And that's what I, when I, when I said Hopkinton, take site control. But you're kind of implying that if we even do that, ultimately we, we would be obligated for some part of the dam.
Yes.
Or whoever the owner was, yeah.
Right, right. Whoever, whoever owns the Hopkinton side is going to own half of that dam.
Not half, but.
It's, it's about half. It's, it's.
Right.
The town line is the center line of the river.
So, okay, so if we say no action and grant Westerly some kind of, some kind of easement.
Correct.
Then are we still obligated for a dam, half the dam?
Right now, I mean, right, right now, other than general liability that would exist otherwise, Hopkinton hasn't taken any steps in regard to the.
So we have a lot to discuss. I mean, and I think, I mean, I don't say a lot, but I, I, I just think taking site control of that piece of property, in, in, in my opinion, at, at this present moment, it's just not a really good idea.
I agree.
And, and like you were talking about the size of that property, point four, it's point four over almost like an eighth of an acre, quarter of an acre long. It's not like.
I see, I see what it looks like.
Yeah, it's.
I just, if it belongs to Hopkinton, Hopkinton now, I just felt.
But it doesn't, it doesn't belong now.
Yes, it does.
No, plus.
No. It's on our, it's on our books.
No, it, no, it's on our.
So it's, it's on your taxable rule, but the owner is renewable resource.
We do not own that property.
Currently.
And is he not in foreclosure?
No, he's, he's not in foreclosure. So the, what, what precipitated the court proceedings, you all know much of the history of the mill. So you had the demolition order, you had the, you had the memo of agreement. You had Superior Court proceedings that authorized the town to go forward with demolition. That went through further litigation all the way through the Supreme Court. And at the end of the day, there's a number of moving pieces, both because of the dam, because of the raceways under the buildings, the infrastructure themselves, they're situated right on top of a wetland. There's a lot of moving pieces that a town can't really say, hey, we're going to bring in the backhoe tomorrow and just demo this building. So i- in light of all of that, and in light of the fact that the owner had not made progress in demoing the buildings, the town brought the petition to the Superior Court seeking equitable relief to say, we need a court appointee to help us start to really navigate these issues and get serious about them. And so it's a little different than a foreclosure. It's the fact that there's the condition of the property and failure to comply with all of the underlying proceedings.
Okay.
Mr. President, could I ask?
Please.
Another question. Have you been in contact with renewable resources?
I have not. I've provided them notice of the proceedings and I've not heard from them.
So you haven't, they haven't expressed any interest in taking responsibility for land on either side of the river?
The only comment that I can make to that is I read a recent news article after the Westerly meeting indicating that they still had plans for the property. That's.
But they haven't participated in any of the court.
I haven't been presented with any plan of abatement, any financial wherewithal to make that happen.
The owner of this Hopkinton land is basically an absentee corporation.
That's correct, and there's a prior Superior Court order which was affirmed by the Supreme Court back in, the Supreme Court affirmed it in 2015, allowing for the demolition of these properties. So on top of the decades of decay that's been experienced out there, we have a order that's about seven years old now.
And then, uh, do we, do we have any idea, I mean, I, I guess you wouldn't know, but I, I'd just be curious if they paid the tax bill for the Hopkinton parcel.
Okay. I don't know.
I, I can't, I can't say that I know that offhand.
Okay.
Because then also, I mean, at some point, if it's no longer in receivership, subject to.
Tax sale and other proceedings, correct.
I don't know who wants to buy it, the liability.
Well, the other part that's important to note to, to your question though, with, with the owner is, again, this is all subject to court approval. So th- this isn't, you know, this process isn't meant to displace an owner of their ownership interest. It's, again, it's the condition, it's a situation that you look at it and you say, this can't be. You have these orders that have gone years and years without compliance. And so, one, I have to ask the court for permission. Two, it doesn't displace the owner before the court orders anything dispositive from saying, here's a real substantive plan, here's what I can do with this place, here's the financial path to make that happen. And if all those happen, it's a, it's an equitable proceeding. So the court certainly could consider that. And quite frankly, that, that might be a home run for both towns. If I could go back to both towns and all the regulators and say, here's a development plan, here's the cash that's going to make it happen. Here's the protocols that the court's going to do. But short of that, again, when you've all driven by the property a number of times, I'm sure you look at it and it's just to the point that you say this, this can't be.
Excellent.
Any more questions, Mr. Dorsey?
No, I just, I thank you for your time.
I just have, I have one more.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All right, so if we, if, if we were to grant a, an easement.
You can't grant an easement, the judge has to.
Well, if you do nothing tonight.
Yeah.
My plan would be to go to the Superior Court, ask for permission to convey the Westerly parcel, ask for permission to convey a per, an easement in perpetuity to Westerly over the Hopkinton parcel. And then next step would be get going, if the court grants all of that, get going on the permitting applications to get the buildings down in parallel with that, get the assessment on the dam done. And then once we have a real, somebody may look at that dam and say, you know what, with some maintenance, you could keep it. Or they might look at it and say, unless you're going to sink a lot into this, you can't. Once we really have that education, then I think Westerly would be in position to, to say, here's what we're thinking. And that'd put me in position to be able to come back to this council and, and say, you know, here's some more realistic options that have some numbers to them. And in the meantime, I think it would give this council an opportunity to talk to your trust, talk to other groups, discuss amongst yourselves as to, you know, what, what the disposition of the Hopkinton parcel looks like long-term. And you may not change from where you are today, but you'll have time to do that.
Excellent.
Okay.
Awesome. I, I have another question. So if during the receivership proceedings, the court granted an easement to Westerly over that land, that's something that would be recorded and that would continue to exist going forward. Whoever took title to that land would take it subject to that easement.
That's correct.
Okay. So whether it's the town, whether it's renewable resources, whether it's some other private third party that comes in and, and takes ownership, that easement that the court creates during the receivership would still be there?
Will stay in perpetuity, correct.
So, good. Thank you for, uh, thank you for, uh, all the info.
Same. Thank you for having me. And if, if that plan is granted, I'll, I'll be back at the point I indicated. If not, and we take a different direction, I'll come back to let you know.
Okay, and if we have any questions, we'll reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, on our new business number two, discuss and consider participating in Governor McKee's statewide anti-litter initiative, Keep Roadie Litter Free.
See, Brian?
No. Brian, do you want to just, just speak to this just for a second?
Sure, I could speak to it. Um, you know, it, it basically, it, it is what it is. I'm sure you guys sort in your package. The governors reached out to the municipalities and kind of asked them to participate in a statewide initiative to, to clean up pollution. And he's just asked that the councils consider signing an agreement. And I think that you. And I think that you have an excerpt from the town, uh, from the governor's website that I put in the package. I'm just trying to get it in front of me. Just give me one second here. All right. There was a couple, a couple of questions. Um, I, I just wanted authorization from the council to be able to speak to this um, and, and be able to, you know, participate in this, uh, take a pledge on behalf of Hopkinton. Uh, but I wanted to run it by the council and see how you felt about it.
I think it's good.
Yeah.
I was going to ask if, if, if Department of Public Works would maybe oversee a day that we set aside to do it? And get resident participation, participation?
Yes. So there's several asks by the governor's office, and I could read them out to you. Um, and you guys could maybe decide which we would like to partake in. Commit to host at least one litter cleanup event during the year. Share litterfreeri.gov on the town website. Share our community litter program with the state of Rhode Island. Uh, share state goals and, and resources with groups from our community who will help tackle litter. Um, share information with our local school districts and encourage innovation, innovative anti-litter programs. Share suggestions and local success to build a stronger state litter program. So I, I think the, the biggest ask would, you know, just to be to host one, at least one litter cleanup event during the year, which I, you know, I thought would be a good thing to.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. And definitely put something on the website. I think that's another, you know, a box we could chuck off on that, you know, kind of ask from the governor's office.
But we need, if you're going to do it, we need to have some department in control of that, you know, that's why I said Department of Public Works could be like the host, but it would, it would include resident participation. You know what I mean?
I would probably help spearhead that. It's not something I think that, um, I mean, Public Works would certainly be running the event, but I think that as far as getting correspondence out, I would, I would help them and assist.
Yeah, absolutely.
The event and the administrative side. And then, you know, bring obviously Dave in the fold. Dave, I would also consider Mary Sawyer in the rec department, um, because she has some good resources. And I would bring them two together, um, and probably the chief and Lisa, you know, get, get everybody together and, and sit down and plan the event. But you're right. I think, um, I think Public Works would be instrumental in, in conducting this event.
Well, they could at least point us in a right direction where there's a lot of stuff on the ground. I'm sure that's what I'm saying, right? So, I mean, it's, it's, it really is a problem for sure.
Well, this, I, obviously I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And when I was going to school, we would have goodwill, you know, cleanup, fix-up, spring event, and all of the schools participated, all the kids participated. And even, um, like my homeroom was, would be challenging another homeroom to see who could bring the most goodwill bags in. I mean, so you could really get neighborhood participation. And I just thought that this is similar to that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
All right, all right. So, uh, I think, you know, we've discussed it, we've considered it. I think we all think it's a great idea. So Brian, I think you have the blessing of the council to, uh, to move forward with, uh, with anything that this requires. All right. Up next, number three under new business, discuss, consider and possibly vote on a resolution in support of House Bill 2022, 2022 House Bill eight zero five five, an act relating to waters and navigation coastal resource management council. I, I put this on the agenda because, um, Deborah Carney from Charlestown had, had reached out and asked if I would bring this up, you know, for our town council. And I agreed because I think, uh, yeah, right, exactly. And just, I'll, I'll say this first is that, I mean, I think, you know, this here affects everybody. You don't have to live in a town that's bordering the ocean to, you know, to, to want to fight for access, but sure, I'll give it to you.
I mean, you know, most of you know, by wearing another hat besides this, actually we're a couple, but public access to not just certain, not necessarily beach access or to pond access is just, you know, it's, you've seen a shrink of the last four years. Both the clubs I involved were in, uh, constantly fighting it. We fought a big one back in 2012 and we actually won it. But I think it's a good idea that he's coming out with this, because everybody should have access to it. It shouldn't see, hey, this is, I bought this, you know, is one of the things I went to. Someone on the beach buys a multimillion dollar house and oh, by the way, right next door is a right of way. And the realtor didn't let the tenant know that. Then the tenant goes out and throws, for lack of better words, magic beans out there. Within 24 hours, there's 10 foot rose bushes and the access is gone. You know, it's, it's, it's an uphill battle. You know, everybody sees it every year with that, but definitely behind this, it is definitely good. We, everybody should be able to access along with this, definitely in favor of it.
Yeah, definitely in favor of it.
I also agree.
All right. Do I need to make a motion to approve this resolution?
Yeah, we have to vote on the motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we approve or support the approval of the, um, House Bill 2022 H eight zero five five. Excellent. Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, definitely aye.
In Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next, we have, I, I think it's public forum. Um, if anyone would like to make any comments, just approach the podium, say your name for the record. And if anyone online, hold on, let me see.
Who's watching? Besides Joe?
I can't, hold on, I'm trying to find my mouse here. Well, sorry, apologize. Oh, there we are. Yes, yes. Yep. Yeah, just, just please state your name for the record. That's all.
I'm Mary Ann McNamara.
Good evening, Ms. McNamara.
And hi, how are y'all? Got this letter from the, uh, town hall from Vision Quest again. This is two years ago, this was done, and I just want to know how come, uh, uh, it's happening again. And, uh, what is this going to do? I mean, how much is it costing us to go do another valuation on all the properties in the town?
Every three years they do a property evaluation and that's.
Oh, I thought it was 10 years.
No, they, they do a full reval every nine or 10 years, I think it is.
It's 10 years, right, Liz?
And that's a complete reval.
And, and, and who are these people, Vision Quest? And now I, I don't know what's going on because like, they came before, you know, they raised the valuation and then they come again and they're raising it again. God knows how much. How is it constitutional that you can come along every three years and evaluate a piece of property 10 or three or four or five times more than it was just three years ago? And what does that do to the taxpayer that's been paying his?
Just so you know, when, when your evaluation goes up, your mill rate changes to. To compensate, right? It compensates for it just because, excuse me, just, just one sec. I mean, you asked, I'm, I'm going to try to answer, okay? The last time we had a reevaluation, it went from 21 something to $18.35. That's because our evaluations went, went up substantially. So they compensate for that. So that way your taxes aren't going up with the evaluation. That's, that's how that happened. So it's, there is a formula. They, it, it, they lower the mill rate when the assessment goes up. Even that out. Other than that, every three years, Hopkinton would have this big windfall.
You can raise the mill rate any, any way you want, right? Is there any law that you have a maximum?
Well, there's a maximum on our yearly budget that we cannot, that a 4% increase.
4%?
Town budget, the town budget. I don't know about the property assessment or anything like that, but like I said, when the property assessments go up, the mill rate changes to coincide with that. It's not like it, it's a money grab. Oh, let's reevaluate.
Yeah, it's not.
Because if that was the case, we would have a ton of money. We don't have a ton.
Trust me, I've dealt with a couple of phone calls last, the last couple of days.
And.
Everybody's like, tax is going up. No, it's not. Just, it's an evaluation. Taxes aren't going up, anything. They'll probably drop a little bit like, you know, Mr. President's right here.
Yeah, there's, I thought that too. I was like, what's going on? And I'm like, and I'm like, oh, all right. Well, they lowered the mill rate and when it was explained to me.
I know. They always say it's going to go down, but then they raise it and raise it and raise it 4% a year or whatever.
It's not 4% a year. It's.
Well, we'll see.
Town budget and the assessment all that are two different.
Okay. And the, and the one other thing, and that was the, um, I'm really concerned about the land I see going up for sale that is totally wetlands. And I'm really worried about what's happening with the developments that everybody wants affordable housing and everybody wants to develop quickly to get people around homes, but.
This is McNamara.
Putting stuff, I see these properties going up for sale that are like flooded.
There's a little, there's, it's not, okay, I'm, I, I think I know what you're talking about, but in order.
This is not just one. It's a few properties now, all of a sudden come out for sale that nobody would ever build.
There's a huge, I'll say this again, there's a huge step for anybody that buys water, water, wetlands, waterfront property, pond property.
Not for solar farms.
No, I'm just saying, there's a huge, huge step with DEM.
Yeah, there's a huge step with DEM, that's right. Is that something to do with the planning board have anything?
This, we.
Putting these properties up for sale?
We, none of this was on our agenda, so we can't necessarily talk about this because this wasn't posted for public to be in on it. But if you want to make comments and tell us these things, we're, I'm all ears.
Okay. Well, I'm telling you, I'm just telling you, I'm seeing this property going up for sale. It has no, I don't understand what you would do with it.
Well, they won't be able to do too much with it. Like, like Mike says, they're, they're very limited on, on what they can, but if they can do something, they'll, they'll try to. But there's.
And one question, just who would I talk to? To set, find out what these DEM has for rules for wetlands and, and.
DM, DM website.
So, I mean, do you guys talk to them at all or the planning board, anybody getting?
I would call the DM.
Yeah.
Do you have a name?
I don't have a name, but I mean.
No.
It should be, it should be a contact number.
Yeah.
They'll, 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 they'll help you. Even if, if you ask them, they'll, they'll more than graciously answer your question.
If a developer wanted to build anything anywhere near any wetlands, they would need to go through the state Department of Environmental Management. It's not really something the town regulates.
Right. And you can go online and see if there's applications that are on, you, there's, there's all kinds of things.
Don't the sellers have to come to you to sell it or somebody? I mean, they don't have to go through anybody to put up a property for sale. Doesn't it have to be like approved to sell?
No.
And build on?
No.
No.
Well, town, town.
Not to sell. Okay. That's good. I just want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Is there anyone online who would, uh, who would like to speak in the forum? If so, please raise your hand. I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Uh, do I have a, a, a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, make the motion. Will you adjourn?
A second.
All in favor?
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion.